And good evening, everyone. Welcome to Governor Parnell's first virtual town hall. My name is Sharon Leihau. I'm the governor's press secretary. Welcome. Before I turn things over to the governor, we would like to hear from you tonight. You can email your questions to askakgov@alaska.gov. You can post them to the governor's Facebook page, or you could tweet using the hashtag #AskAKGov. So with that, Governor, the 2014 legislative session is coming to a close. What are your thoughts so far on your legislative priorities?
You know, I'm looking forward to the end of session, but I gotta tell you, I'm just so excited to be able to appear virtually through the wonders of social media and Facebook and give the public a chance to ask questions and have me answer for them. You know, I've been used to engaging with just reporters. So, for example, in the last month, little over a month, I've had about 25 separate interviews with individual reporters where they get to ask all the questions and get to kind of probe for their stories. But this is your chance as Alaskans to do that with me and get some responses. So I'm pretty excited about that. You know, when it comes to the legislative session, we've got roughly four days left, five days left of the legislative session. I set forward three priorities for legislators to deal with. One is to create more educational opportunity. Second was to make even more progress on the gas line. And third was budget-related in addressing that single biggest cost driver in the budget, the unfunded pension liability. So I hope you've got some questions tonight on those topics, and I'm happy to answer those questions.
And once again, you can email your questions to askakgov@alaska.gov. Post them to the governor's Facebook page, or tweet using hashtag #AskAKGov. So first, we're gonna start with a comment from Patrick Owen. He's a senior citizen who lives at Fireweed Place, right here in downtown Juneau. He called me today and let me know that he doesn't have a computer, but wanted to make a comment about state spending. He said, "The state could save money if we turn the lights off at the State Office Building after business hours."
You know, I'll have to ask our Commissioner of Administration about that, because it doesn't seem right that they remain on. You know, in Anchorage, in the Atwood Building, for example, they shut off automatically about 6:00 o'clock. So appreciate Patrick's comment, and I'll check on that.
Next is an email from Cindy Lee Lake from Anchorage. Her comments, "Due to unprecedented public input from across the state, the administration's original omnibus education bill may be significantly altered. Are you inclined to support the changes being made to the original legislation? Is there any likelihood that you would veto a bill differing significantly from your original offering?"
You know, our education bill has just become kind of the centerpiece of what we're trying to do for our young people. When I think about our own kids and the education that we were able to provide for them, both through public and private schools, it makes me just, I remain committed to the public school system and making sure that whatever opportunities we can create and whatever funding it's gonna take, that education is worth it for our kids. And so the comprehensive education bill that I put forward had not only new educational opportunities, but it also has new funding. So I think about opportunities in that bill, like more vocational technical training, like more charter school opportunity, like more residential school opportunities, especially for our rural communities. Letting kids test out of classes that they've already mastered, there's no reason for them to spend seat time in a class when they've already mastered the curriculum. I think about giving, and this is in the bill, allowing kids to get dual credits for high school as well as for job certification. So if they're taking a welding class in high school, they not only can get credit for a high school graduation, but also for certification in welding. All of that, all those new opportunities are still in the bill, at least as I've seen some latest copies in the Senate. And I have to tell you, too, that funding increases as well are on the way. So that's all in the bill, and I'm looking forward to continued debate with the state senate over those provisions and working with House members to make sure that we make this truly the education session.
Liz from Delta Junction writes in, "How ready and willing are you to sign tough legislation into law that punishes people guilty of child sexual abuse more severely?"
You know, child sexual abuse, including domestic violence in our state, is a huge problem. I've made eradicating that epidemic of domestic violence and sexual assault a centerpiece of our efforts. And with that Choose Respect Initiative that we've really focused on the issue, we've not only put new law enforcement officers in many communities that didn't have them, but we've ignited Alaskans in over 170 communities to stand up courageously for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. You know, the writer asked specifically about signing tough legislation related to child sexual abuse, and I not only signed it, I sponsored it. Last year, I believe it was, it was the, there was legislation related to toughening penalties for child sexual exploitation, as well as for enticing minors on the internet through minor pornography and the like. So we're working not only with creating tougher laws, but also empowering Alaskans to stand up and be courageous and intervene where they can to get their friends' help and free Alaskans from these deep evils.
Mike from Palmer writes in, "Will you veto the extra $100 BSA increase since many good education bills were not passed?"
So what I said in my State of the State address was that I would sign an increase in the BSA if we created sufficient new educational opportunity for our kids. And right now, with the bill creating new vocational technical training opportunities for our young people, with it creating new charter school opportunities, with it creating the ability for a young person to test out of classes, I'm looking right now at some brand-new opportunities that I am willing to support, funding increases. And I also wanna kind of come back to that, there is a bit of a misunderstanding of the state's contribution to education. And this kind of comes back to some of the spin that comes out of Juneau at times, or comes out of the Capitol at times. And the state is the only entity that has been increasing funding for education. The federal government's been cutting funding to education, and numerous local governments as well have been cutting funding to education. And I hope we can talk some more about that a little bit later.
Once again, you can email your questions to askakgov@alaska.gov, or post them to the governor's Facebook page. Allison just wrote in, "With increased class sizes and student loads, how will teachers develop the relationships with their students that we know have such a positive impact on outcomes?"
You know, I remember, my favorite teacher was Mrs. Simmons. She was a debate teacher of mine and a forensics teacher at East High School in Anchorage, where I graduated. She was tough as nails, but she had a heart for her kids. And I know how valuable a teacher can be in a young person's life. And so when you get a class that's too big for a teacher, even the good ones, struggle. And so what we're working to do is make sure that enough money gets into the classrooms, whether through the BSA, the Base Student Allowance, whether increasing that, or through means outside the Base Student Allocation, to give districts that flexibility to create some innovative new initiatives within the district that ignite our kids and also give these teachers a chance to really teach.
Jared Gerbl writes in, "Governor, what is the latest on the EPA incident in Chicken, Alaska? And do you support the Constitutional Convention resolution moving through the Alaska Senate right now?"
Yes, I do support that Constitutional Convention resolution. I certainly think that's an option for states to take back and our citizens to take back some of this, some of our rightfully possessed authorities under the Constitution that the federal government has been taking. And when it comes to the miners in Chicken, they were subjected last summer to an EPA raid that involved EPA, BLM, and one state DEC person. And it was just outrageous. I actually went out to Chicken right after the raid and participated in the town hall meeting to hear from the miners, hear from these good Alaskans, who are just small business people trying to scratch out a living from the earth. And when I saw how they had been treated by an investigative team with really no probable cause, it appeared to think that any crime was being committed, yet they showed up with kind of bulletproof vests, automatic weapons, semi-automatic weapons and automatic weapons, blasting in on their four-wheelers into the camps. I just thought that was an outrage when it comes to our citizens. So I named an investigator, got an investigative report. Unfortunately, I gotta tell you, the EPA obstructed that investigator the whole way. I went to Congress and just said, "Look, your EPA is out of control, and I need you, Congress, to hold hearings and hold them accountable." So the bottom line is, I will stand up and I'll fight for Alaskans and make sure that the federal government doesn't run over them. And when it does, I'm gonna stand up and fight them.
Going back to education, Becky just wrote in, "Why can't we use the money that is given out to Alaskans every year through the PFD program and give this to schools? I believe education should be the number-one priority," Becky says.
You know, I agree that constitutionally, education is just one of our highest priorities. It's one of those things that we're mandated by the state, that we will provide a public school system. I also think that the writer has an important point. You know, she could give her permanent fund dividend to the school of her choice, whether public or private. So that's one great way that she could do that.
Mike from the Kenai, "I would like to see the state of Alaska grab the reins and build the King Cove-Izenbeck Road in spite of the squawks by federal agencies and bureaucrats."
Yeah, me, too. It is a hot topic. And this is another example of federal overreach, where the Department of Interior has elevated birds over the safety and health of Alaskans. If we can't even build a nine-mile road between King Cove and Cold Bay to make sure that our citizens can get medical help, then we've got some real trouble in Washington. So what I've done is not only begun, not only worked with our congressional delegation on this, but the state owns some land in there as well. And we're looking at our tidelands to see if, whether we might get a road across those state tidelands. Also, in the last week or two, I filed a notice that the state was going to be filing claims on what are known as RS-2477 trails, meaning that there are trails that have been historically used by Alaskans. We have a right to continue using those trails. I'm gonna fight for that right for those residents of King Cove.
Once again, we're taking your questions at askakgov@alaska.gov. Anna writes in, "What is your plan to address the growing problem with substance abuse in Alaska?"
You know, that is so tough. And there's not a family in this state, including our own, that hasn't been touched by or hurt by substance abuse. And it really does come down to some tough love among family members to intervene. It means having the right treatment programs available in the communities. That's a tough one, but the state literally spends millions of dollars making sure that there's access to substance abuse treatment. And ultimately, I gotta call on Alaskans, just like within our own family, to really step up for their friends and family and get them the help they need.
Marnie on Twitter sends this in, "Why continue to demand amnesty from Common Core when it works for a majority of the rest of the nation?"
Well, there's a real simple story about Common Core. Alaska is not buying Common Core, and we're not, here's what happened. When I first became governor in 2009, the Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, came to Alaska, and he visited me in my office. And I sat with him, and he urged me to adopt the Common Core standards for Alaska and to participate in, actually participate in the development of those Common Core standards. And I asked Secretary Duncan, I said, "Mr. Secretary, what is your ultimate goal with these Common Core standards?" And he looked at me across my table in my office, and he said, "Governor, we're not just gonna build national standards, we're gonna build international standards." And when I saw that our federal government, this administration, was moving towards international standards, an international body dictating what our local districts and what our state would have to adopt as curriculum, I told him we would not be part of it. I said, "Count me out, and count the state of Alaska out." I was one of the first governors to say no to getting into that body that was developing the Common Core standards. I told him very clearly that our state was going to, through our State Board of Education, was going to adopt our own Alaska standards and raise the bar on our curriculum, which we did in 2012, and that those standards would be decided upon by Alaskans. We weren't gonna buy into a national group, set the standards, and then be told that we had to adopt those exact standards. The same applies to testing to those standards. Our Department of Education has contracted with a group separate from the Common Core Smarter Balance Consortium to create our own state's assessments on those tests. So we're not gonna be a Common Core state. We're gonna continue to set our own standards. We're gonna continue to do that.
Stacy just dropped a note saying, "Thanks for all you're doing on our behalf." It's very nice.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you so much, and it really is my honor to serve you, Alaskans, and thank you.
Phyllis Spencer writes in, "Can you talk to Alaska Native suicide and the dropout rate?"
You know, the suicide rate and the dropout rate is really about a person not having hope, not really seeing a reason to live that place of despair. And I guess the issue really is, what can we, as a people, do to bring some hope and opportunity into those lives so that they realize that life is worth living? I think the first step is just acknowledging that every human being is valuable, that every human being is intrinsically valuable. And many don't know that in this state. Many are raised in homes where they're not treated as a priceless treasure, they're treated as much less and much worse. So I think the first thing to do is to acknowledge every Alaskan as intrinsically valuable. Next, from the policy standpoint, I work to create policies that create opportunity and create space and a path for those who don't have any hope. And suicide often in our state comes from a despair built from domestic violence and sexual assault, for example. There are many reasons for suicide, but often that's part of their story, is they feel that hopelessness and that despair. And I just wanna tell a brief story about a community in Alaska that has really turned the corner in the last four years when it comes to hope and opportunity for its citizens. After the Choose Respect rallies this year in the state, I got on the phone with, I'm guessing, a little over 100 of the community contacts. So in 170 communities that had Choose Respect rallies, I was on the phone with many of them, and I asked for their success stories. And I had one of those communities speak to how, four years ago or so, when the contact, the community person came into the high school, that person was told that 100% of their girls in the high school would be sexually assaulted in high school. And that was just a stunning and tragic statistic that was her reality four or five years ago. Through the efforts of that community, through the Choose Respect Initiative, through several other initiatives that some leaders in the community took on, she said, "Governor, I can tell you that today, that we don't have a girl in our school who would say that when it comes to their high school experience." And she said, "I can't, I can't turn back the clock and take back what happened to them before high school," she said, "but we now have a community where mothers are speaking with their daughters, where men are speaking with their sons, speaking about the way it used to be and about the way it needs to be." And so I'm just so encouraged that in communities across Alaska, Alaskans are actually just stepping up courageously and providing that hope and opportunity that one day will result in fewer suicides, creates paths of opportunity and more hope for our kids.
Once again, you can email your questions to askakgov@alaska.gov, or post them to the governor's Facebook page. We've got a tweet from Mark from the Bob and Mark Show. He would like to know, "What is your stance on legalizing marijuana in Alaska? And is the state prepared to implement a regulatory system on marijuana?"
So that's the subject of an initiative, and I'll take off my governor's hat and wear my personal hat on this one, because I'm not allowed to advocate for or against an initiative. But I do oppose that initiative, and just for the very simple reason that just even the recent studies that demonstrate the brain abnormalities that result from marijuana use, and especially in proximity to our kids. So I would oppose that. On the other hand, if the initiative passes, the question was, will the state implement regulations? And the answer is, of course. If a law passes, there has to be a framework to implement what's passed, and so I would respect that and create that regulatory framework.
From Marijuana to Bed Bugs. This is from Pamela. "Is there any state authority that can do something about the risk to Alaskans from bedbugs? And there's any state authority that can take action against designated high-risk buildings that are a safety risk to Alaskans? What do you know about bed bugs, Governor?"
I can't stand bed bugs, and I hope not too many of our listeners or watchers have to deal with them. But I know certainly that it is an issue in parts of our state, and it really depends upon where the issue is coming from. Did she identify where she's from?
She did not.
Okay, so for instance, if you're in an urban area in a city, and there typically are local enforcement officials who can help with that, especially if you're a renter or if you're in a hotel or something. If you're in a rural community that doesn't have that kind of infrastructure or local government, there may be some answers that we can provide through the Department of Health and Social Services. So I'd encourage you to call the Commissioner's office there, Commissioner Vilstrue or Department of Health and Social Services, and we'll see if there aren't some other answers, depending on this person's specific experience.
Lindsay Docterman writes in, "Can you explain the capital costs, maintenance, and operational costs surrounding the Juneau Access Project?"
So, big picture, Juneau Access is really about a road to Juneau, kind of between Skagway and Juneau. And if Alaskans elsewhere think about this, a road is really a path to more opportunity. It's a way to connect our citizens to each other, as well as to jobs. And so the Juneau Access Project, as it's called, is in its early stages. It's certainly been an idea that's been around for a lot of time. A lot of people have worked on it for many years. But this year, in the legislature, I asked the legislature for $5 million of state funds and then $30 million of federal authorization to extend that road that is at the tip of Juneau here at Cascade Point and keep that moving.
Rebecca writes in, "Thank you for including a three-year BSA increase in your education bill. Now that it has become clear that the BSA increase needs to be much bigger in order to prevent teacher and staff layoffs, how are you working with members of the legislature to amend the numbers in your original bill?"
Good question. And again, I wanna go back to what I said earlier, that part of the reason we're in this situation with school districts stretched is because the federal government has cut funding, and some local governments have cut funding as well. State funding for education, in the four years that I've been here, has increased from just over $1 billion, it's increased by over $200 million. And with this budget that we're gonna pass, the legislature will pass, it's likely to be about a $300 million increase. The writer asked about the specific piece of my bill, and the bill that I have has those components of educational opportunity I spoke to earlier. It also has a BSA increase in it. The House took action and raised the three-year BSA increase that I had put in my bill. They raised the numbers there. The Senate actually took a different approach. They put $100 million outside the Base Student Allocation. And part of the thinking there on the Senate side is that giving school districts that ability and that flexibility to be innovative with that money, instead of just pouring it into the BSA. What we're hearing from a couple of school districts is that some of the local districts have had their collective bargaining negotiations stop with teachers, because the teachers in their district, not the teachers, but the NEA reps, are waiting to see how much of a BSA increase they can get so that they can get it into their contracts. That's really not what the BSA increase is meant for. And so I think the Senate is starting to take this approach, that if we put money outside the BSA, we can better assure that some of that money goes to teacher contracts, and some of that money goes into the classroom for the kids beyond the teacher salaries. So right now, in the Senate and House, it's really, how do we bring together these two competing sides, where the House has a three-year BSA increase and the Senate has a three-year cash outside the BSA idea? So that'll come together in the next few days, and we're gonna, we'll finish creating more educational opportunity and more funding for our schools.
Governor Bill writes in, "Why is there a proposal to build a road to Nome when extending a railroad spur would make more sense?"
So when we're talking about the road to Nome, we're really talking about roads to resources. For example, we're building, we're working to build a road to the Ambler Mining District. That is part of a road to Nome. But the idea is to build segments to new opportunities for Alaskans. So if we build a road to the Ambler Mining District, it opens up new jobs for Alaskans and helps to pay for that road as well from the companies that wanna use it. So Road to Nome really is about roads to resources and taking it in segments across time that makes sense for Alaskans, both in terms of transporting lower-cost fuel to our communities, as well as opening up new job opportunities in a place like the Ambler Mining District.
Jay Wall on Twitter writes, "Not implementing Common Core puts students at risk as they apply to college. How can you help Alaska students with this?"
I don't agree. I think Alaska standards are now among the more rigorous in the nation. Our students that are coming out of our schools are better prepared than they were several years ago. In fact, one of the initiatives that I champion, the Alaska Performance Scholarship, is already working to raise academic achievement among our youngsters and create new opportunities for them. That Alaska Performance Scholarship is available to any high school student that wants to earn a scholarship to an in-state job training program or an in-state college or university. All they gotta do is take more than the minimum courses required, kind of a set of criteria there. If they get an A average on those courses, they'll get about $4,600 per year, up to four years, for post-secondary education in the state. If they get a B average, they'll get about $3,500, $3,400 a year towards that scholarship. And if they get a C+, but they took more than those minimums, I say, "Good on you. Thanks, you know, good job taking more than the minimums. You did well." They earned a scholarship of about $2,300 per year for that job training program or for that college experience. We are competitive in this country and across the globe. I think our graduates will be able to stand tall, particularly as time goes on, and these higher education standards, the Alaska standards, take hold, as well as the Alaska Performance Scholarship, as an incentive to kids to take more courses.
Once again, you can email your questions to askakgov@alaska.gov. Beau wrote in, "Would you reconsider the expansion of Medicaid in Alaska?"
Well, I said, I'm always willing to reconsider something with new information, but at this point, our Medicaid program spends about $1.5 billion, and we care for about 140,000 people. In order to, if we just stay on that current track with 140,000 people, and that's growing by thousands every year, that one and a half billion will be 2.5 billion by 2020, just on its own, without Medicaid expansion. If you add Medicaid expansion into that, we're adding probably another $2 to $3 billion across that same timeframe, across the next four years. Federal funding for Medicaid would become one of our most significant economic drivers in this state. We would be hopelessly dependent on the federal government if we went down this road, putting our kids at risk and not really helping the group of people that we're trying to help. So we're gonna protect Alaska's vulnerable. That is a priority of ours that's demonstrated with the programs that we fund. I'm working with our Department of Health and Social Services to identify this gap population, the people that don't qualify for Medicaid, but also don't have ready access to other services, like tribal health clinics, like the VA, for instance. Once we identify that gap population, which we believe is between about 7,000 and 10,000 people now, we wanna find out what services, the gap services, that they don't have access to. It's pretty, this population that we're talking about has access to primary care, for instance, through the community health centers and through the public health nursing centers. But I think we've got some room to work there to provide and protect them when it comes to some of their chronic care needs, and that's what we're gonna be focusing on. I created a Medicaid Services Commission to not only look at our existing Medicaid reform, look at our existing Medicaid program, to see how we can stop this cost curve from going up from $1.5 billion to $2.5 billion, to see if we can do something there that makes sense, but also to help address this gap population and the gap services that we've recently identified.
Governor Judy writes in, "I live in Beluga, 10 miles from the proposed Chewitna Coal Strip Mine. When I met you at the Capitol, you shook my hand and said you would never trade one resource for another. Do you still stand by that quote?"
Absolutely. There is no, you know, if a mine can't meet federal and state permitting standards, it won't get permitted. There's just no way around that. So I stand by that comment.
Lance Roberts writes in, "What are you doing to make sure hospital kidnappings of those like Brett Vaughn and Justina Pelletier in Chicago don't happen again?"
Yeah, when I saw that, when I saw both stories, I was deeply concerned, and in particular with the one in Alaska. Thankfully, with the, through the efforts of folks in my office, as well as in other departments of the state, as well as just the help of some of the other folks outside of state government, you know, this tragedy and this really sad situation has become better. I understand that through some of these efforts, Mr. Bone's parents have been, and family members now are able to see him on a much more regular basis. And so we really wanna prevent these actions from occurring and make sure that there is not only adequate help following a court proceeding where the judge has heard all the evidence, as in Mr. Bone's case, and made a ruling, but that we do whatever we can to restore the person to health and reunite them with their families. So that's my goal. That's what we work towards.
Philip is writing in, "The administration often seems to forge ahead with a certain level of disregard for environmental considerations. In what ways is the administration taking steps to alleviate these important concerns raised by the public?"
Well, a couple things. One is that every day in our agencies, the Department of Environmental Conservation, Department of Fish and Game, Department of Natural Resources, these agencies go through rigorous permitting processes for any application that comes forward. rigorous permitting processes for any application that comes forward. So, we're not only protecting the environment through our rigorous permitting processes, but when it comes to, for instance, legislation that I introduced this year, last year, known as HB 77, that was an effort to really streamline our permitting process. In my view, there's no reason why members of the public and businesses that want to do business in Alaska should have to wait years for a decision. But that bill had many good ideas in it and a couple that needed more work, and the couple that needed more work really took that bill down. And my hope is that across time, we'll be able to be more timely and more responsive with the public. We've been able to frankly make up about 50% of the backlog that we identified in the permitting applications at DNR, for example, so working to be more timely there. But we're also being responsive to the public and saying, you know, when these concerns are brought forward, we're willing to change the legislation, make it more responsive to the public, and indeed, in this case, stop the legislation and look for a better way to accomplish the same ends of protecting our environment and creating job opportunities for our people.
Governor, do we have time for more questions?
Yes, yeah, let's keep going.
Okay. Ben from Anchorage writes in, "We've heard a lot about the referendum on oil tax reform, SB 21. Since passing, are the claims that investment is up true? Would repealing SB 21 help increase oil production?"
No, if you repeal SB 21, you're going to kill oil production. You're going to kill the jobs of Alaskans currently. And again, I'm going to take off my governor's hat and make it my personal hat here because what I've really seen across the state is an investment by these companies in the billions of dollars. These companies trade publicly. That means that they are not going to make announcements like they made pledging billions of dollars of new investment unless they had the approval of their boards. And so, being able to say what they've done, being able to say that they're committing new money like that, it's pretty serious. But there's also the reality on the ground in Alaska. You go to the North Slope, you can't find a bed if you're a contractor to sleep in because there's so much work and so many people up there. You go to Fairbanks, and you go to the welding yards, you go to the shops, you go to the Alaska Railroad Yard, as I did. You see rig mats moving, drilling pipe moving, drilling muds moving. It's all going north. You go on the Dalton Highway, there are trucks going. You go, they're looking for commercial drivers, people with CDLs to drive the trucks. There is so much new work in this state because of SB 21, and if we roll that back, my concern is that that goes away. Additionally, a healthy oil industry is really necessary to get a gas line. Oil and gas come out of the same hole. They come out of the same well, and the infrastructure on the North Slope is aging, and it requires replacement. That's oil infrastructure. So, to replace it, they've got to have a healthy oil industry to have the money to replace it, and that is the basis, and that infrastructure provides the basis for a gas line. So, important, SB 21, the policy has some real positive effects, not only for us now but for our kids and grandkids in the future.
Once again, you can email your questions to askakgov@alaska.gov, or you could post them to the Governor's Facebook page, or tweet us using hashtag #AskAKGov. We will go back to Juno Access. Bill Leidy writes in, "Why risk ridicule from outside by putting a $35 million appropriation in the capital budget for Juno Access, another, quote, 'road to nowhere'?"
You know what? I am more concerned about creating opportunity for Alaskans than I am about what people outside the state think of me. So, I'm going to continue pushing for a greater access, more roads to resources so that our people, Alaskans, have a shot at a future as well as jobs today.
Amy on Twitter asks, "What is your plan for alleviating the high energy costs in Fairbanks and the interior?"
I'm glad she asked that question because we've been, I've been focused on and taking the lead on the interior energy plan in Fairbanks as well as throughout the interior. And here's what that looks like. It's known as the gas trucking solution in Fairbanks, but for years, the local utilities have not been able to come up with a plan and get the parties together to move forward. I not only came up with a plan, I worked with interior legislators to create a way for the state to initially finance a liquefaction plant on the North Slope as well as a distribution, a part of a distribution system in Fairbanks and North Pole. The plan is really to liquefy the gas, truck it to Fairbanks, and then put it into a distribution system there. That creates the initial backbone of a gas supply situation. That liquefaction plant can produce propane, and it can then send that propane to villages along the river system or other communities on the highway system. So, right now, I'm, the plan is for Fairbanks streets to begin to be effectively torn up so the pipe can be laid for this new, for new natural gas to be coming. That should be started this summer. It'll continue in 2015 and 2016, and will take some years to build out. But this will be the first time in Alaskan history that North Slope gas will be commercialized for Alaskans. And we all know, anybody who's spent any time in Fairbanks, and for those of you who live in Fairbanks interior as well as all the interior communities, you know how high the cost of energy is. I've led in bringing relief, and help is on the way.
Governor Joe Marie writes in, "Will you stand with Alaskan women and veto Senate Bill 49?"
So, Senate Bill 49 that just passed the legislature defines when public funds can be used for abortions, because this Alaska Supreme Court has said that the state of Alaska must provide public funding for abortions to women who qualify for the Medicaid program. That, what the bill does is it defines medically necessary or medical necessities so that public funding goes only to medically necessary as their abortions, as they're defined in the bill. I clearly will be signing that bill. The Alaska Supreme Court has said that the state may define what's medically necessary rather than funding every abortion that a person might want, and to be accountable and responsible for those public funds, I'll be signing that bill, and the Alaskans I know and who know me know that I'm a pro-life governor and will continue to work towards those ends.
Another question on Medicaid, Lynn from Sidka writes in, "You refuse to expand Medicaid under the Affordable Care Act so that thousands of Alaskans can have health coverage under the premise that you, quote, 'don't know what it will look like in three years,' yet you propose a road that is not only unpopular with Southeast Alaskans but for which you have no budget?"
So, back to Medicaid expansion, because that's an important topic. You know, really what this is about is whether or not we're going to risk our kids' future on a huge cash infusion from the federal government to the state. I think there are better ways to address the gaps in services for the 7,000 to 10,000 people who need those services. We're working to address those through the Department of Health and Social Services, and I got to speak to this earlier, but I'm happy to elaborate at a later time, too.
Hope sends us a tweet, "How can you demand accountability from schools when oil companies are not even being audited?"
Well, I don't think that's true. Certainly, the Department of Revenue conducts audits and continues to conduct audits. Also, we're holding them accountable for their promises. Last year, they said that they would spend at least and commit at least $5 billion if SB 21 passed, the More Alaska Production Act. We've had more than that $5 billion pledged. We've had more than that $5 billion pledged, and if you look at the capital spend of the companies, for about four years, they were pretty level at roughly $2 billion of new capital spend, new investment. A lot of that was, you know, taking care of that aging infrastructure. This year, and they're already at $3 billion or $3 billion plus. So, SB 21 is clearly working. I think another topic that we opened with that I didn't get a chance to speak to was the gas line, because I did speak to the interior energy project. But we are making just historic progress on getting Alaska's gas to Alaskans and to markets beyond. You know, the legislature has in front of them legislation to help us move forward. It's legislation that I introduced, and really what this is about is giving permission, giving the executive branch permission to move into pre-feed, the pre-front-end engineering and design work on the Alaska LNG project. What does that mean? Well, that means that for the first time in Alaska's history, three producer companies, a pipeline company, and the state of Alaska are willing to lay down money so the state can become an owner, so we can own a piece of this pipe and move forward to design the gas treatment plant, the pipeline, and the liquefaction plant. So, for the first time, these companies and the state are aligned in getting Alaska's gas to Alaskans and then to markets beyond. So, I'm pretty excited about the potential there. It's the first time that we have been to this place, and got a lot more to go, but at this juncture, I'm pretty optimistic.
David writes in, "Do you support aquaponics," I hope I said that right, "where we can eat the fish? This is not in the ocean or rivers but artificial tank environments."
You know, I love wild Alaska salmon and wild Alaska seafood, and I think we're going to stick with it for now.
Marcy writes in, "Serious question. Where were you when they buried innocent children because of our family court system is so adamant about placing kids in the hands of abusers?"
You know, I have, back in 1994, I was a young state House member, and probably in my early 30s, and it was the first time that I saw the face of domestic violence and child abuse in our state. I was blessed to be raised in a home where that did not exist. But in Anchorage, I took a ride along with an Anchorage police officer, the first one, and I've taken many since with Anchorage police officers and other law enforcement officers across the state. But on that ride, I saw things that I really, I was stunned by, I was shocked by, and I was disgusted by. I saw moms huddled in, I saw a mom huddled in a closet with her child because she called for help. She called 911 for help, and her abuser ran when he discovered she made the phone call. I went to another call where a mom and her two kids were huddled in the driveway waiting for help as the perpetrator had run off as well when she called for help. So, this is a very serious and very important issue to me as well as to those who suffer in our state. I've not stopped fighting for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault since, since I was faced with it. In 1996 even, I helped pass, I sponsored and passed the Domestic Violence Prevention Act of 1996 that set the first consistent statewide policy when it comes to domestic violence. But a new law isn't enough. It's going to take each Alaskan stepping forward courageously, and that's what the Choose Respect Initiative is about. It's about prevention, it's about intervention, and it's about the support services necessary to help those who need the shelter and need the support services in domestic violence's aftermath. And I'm really proud of the work being done by Alaskans in 170 communities to stand up for their fellow Alaskans, Choose Respect rallies and events that we started in our office, but it started with 18 communities just about four years ago, and now that's grown to over 170. But this is really the work of Alaskans, stepping up for Alaskans, and this is where that battle's going to be won.
A few more education questions?
Yeah, just a couple more.
Okay. Todd writes in, "Governor Parnell, what is your vision to support smaller bush populations in need of secure, quality education?"
Boy, that's been, that's been a passion of mine, too. You know, I took a trip with Senator Lyman Hoffman about three years ago to southwest Alaska, to Alakanook and Kipnook and several other communities, and saw the deplorable state of some of the schools there. It was brought home to me then that the funding was not equitable between urban school construction and rural school construction. And so, he and I worked together and created a more equitable funding formula so that when urban schools benefited from state school construction funds, rural schools did as well. That was then, this is now, and in the comprehensive education bill that I filed, rural students will be benefited significantly in a number of ways. One is through more career technical education opportunities. One is through our digital teaching initiative to bring the best teachers into classrooms across the state. Another is through residential schools and through the residential stipends that are proposed in my legislation. And of course, there's the BSA increase as well and additional funding that we're proposing. So, rural education is on its way up, and I'm proud to partner with many of our rural legislators in addressing those issues.
Speaking of BSA, email just came in from Great Alaska Schools. "How do you respond to the expertise of school districts, educators, and parents who all say they need an increase in the BSA of more than $200 bucks?"
So, I've actually been traveling the state and visiting with parents and teachers, and in particular, I've, for instance, in Petersburg and Wrangell, Ketchikan, and Anchorage, Fairbanks, just in the last two or three months, I've been in those towns, in those schools, meeting with their teachers or the superintendents, meeting with parents who are members of the PTA. And what I tell them is, first off, funding has increased from the state, and it's been cut by federal and local governments. Two, we recognize the funding needs that are there, and the state will be providing a significant increase in funding. It's not so much the means. The BSA is a means to an end. The end is whether there's adequate funding for a district to utilize in educating those kids. That's what we're shooting for. So, appreciate the email, and just know that the House passed a bill with 185 the first year, and then 58, $58 more the second year. That totals about $1.3 billion for education spending, for K-12 education spending when it's all said and done. The Senate has proposed obviously more cash outside the BSA, but I expect in the next four days, that'll be worked out and a compromise will be had between the two bodies, and Alaskans will have not only more education opportunity through my comprehensive education bill, but Alaskans will also have more and greater funding.
Last question, Governor.
All right.
This is from Joe49. Do you like pizza? If so, what's your favorite kind of pizza?
I love pizza, and it's got to have a lot of meat on it, so I love meat pizzas with some veggies. So, love the sausage, pepperoni, everything. So, thanks so much.
We're out of time. Thanks, Governor.
Thank you.